He's always so nice.
The machine got shut off, so that's okay. Machine got shut off, so we've got to...
Warm it up again?
Yes, so you can do that part. Okay, he's ready.
It's done, I think.
You're on.
Yeah. Okay. We will now reconvene the public session of the Salem Kaiser Public School Board meeting. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, all board members are present tonight. Any agenda modifications? There are none. We're going to public comment, and just a quick reminder. Public comment this evening, there will not be any public comment about items that are not on the agenda. Only tonight comments that are on the agenda. And I notice here we have, it looks like Steve Powers. Steve?
Thank you Chair Person Goss, members of the school board, Superintendent Perry. I'm Steve Powers, Salem City Manager, and I'm here this evening to speak to item 5A on your agenda. On September 19th, 2018, the Salem City Council approved the applicant's application for the city's multiple unit housing tax incentive program and asked that staff work with their taxing jurisdictions to achieve a full abatement of the property tax on the residential portion of the project. The project is in downtown Salem and is a multiple-family unit apartment development. City Council approved this unanimously, this 10-year abatement, to receive the full benefit of this tax program. The city and the school district represent about 52 percent of the total property tax levy, and for the property tax to be fully abated, for the project to receive the abatement, school board approval is requested. The city and the school board have worked in the past on projects such as this. There have been four where there has been a property tax abatement provided. These incentives help maintain and add to the vitality of our downtown, enhance our city's park, Riverfront Park, and help, again, to continue to revitalize a downtown. This property is located within the Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area, and any tax funds generated by the development that will be forgone due to this exemption would go to the urban renewal area. There is no impact, there is no impact to the Salem Kaiser School District budget, there is no impact to your recently approved bond, congratulations. The only impact, if this is denied, is that that tax increment would be going to our urban renewal area, which we would be grateful for, but again, City Council has asked for your consideration of granting the abatement of the school district portion of the tax levy. We really appreciate the partnership that the city and the school district have enjoyed over the years. The CTEC program is a national-level program that we're very proud to be part of with the school district. We look forward to continuing to work with you on the school projects that will be funded by your recently approved bond. We continue to look forward to working with you on shared use of facilities, and we would ask, and I'm asking on behalf of the Salem City Council, that you consider approving the tax exemption for the Mu Tip project. And I will be staying as you consider that item if you do have questions for me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Reconsideration of item 6C from February 12th Board Meeting. We have two action items this evening. Our first is a reconsideration for item 6C. Mr. Director Green, would you help us walk through this?
Sure. We haven't done this before as a school board, so I would encourage you all to, if you have it with you, a guide to parliamentary procedure put out by one of the best state associations around for school board members. A reconsideration motion, and I will make that motion now, Madam Chair. Having voting on the prevailing side, because I needed to change my vote from yes to no, so I'm voting on the prevailing side, I move that the Salem Kaiser School Board reconsider the vote by which it failed to authorize Resolution 201819-4. That motion does require a second, and anyone can make that second, Madam Chair.
This first one is for the process.
That's correct. A motion for reconsideration, we debate the issue of bringing it back before the board.
Right.
We don't debate the merits of the issue. That's a motion separate. If we do reconsider and bring it back before us, then a motion needs to be made to put the resolution again before us, and at that point, that's where we can debate the merits of the issue, but in this, it's just the ability to bring the vote back before us.
Right.
So I would move to reconsider the vote.
The motion has been made and seconded by Director Blazi. Is there any further discussion?
My comment would be, Madam Chair, you all remember the meeting, and it's no fault of Chuck, she was on the phone, he was sick, and I believe we had a technical glitch. He wanted to vote yes on the motion, and the motion would have passed at that time, and it failed because of that, and I think we ought to at least have the debate and give it a fair shot again and have it before us. You know, you can vote any way you want to on it, but I think just because we had a technical glitch, the board should reconsider this and have it before the body again.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and vote on that. All in favor?
I think Chuck had something he wanted to say, Madam Chair.
Chuck, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right. Thank you, Jim, for that clarification. I'm always glad to be singled out as the sick guy in the crowd. For the record, I'd just like to mention that I did vote yes, but it was after everything had been said and done, so I will be supporting this motion that Director Green is proposing, and I will be supporting the 6C again.
So the vote is just to bring the motion, the issue, back before us?
Right. All those in favor of bringing the matter back signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes, six to one, and Director Kylo opposed. The rest, the remaining part of the board voted aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Now that motion to approve the resolution, I would move that the Salem Kaiser School Board, having reconsidered it, move and adopt the resolution authorizing the agreement of request from the City of Salem to the Salem Kaiser School District, taxing District Resolution 201819-4.
It's been, the motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Green and seconded by Director Blazi. Okay, all those in favor?
Now, we get to talk about this one, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do that every time. Discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I think, as the city manager mentioned, and it was a long night that night, and the city manager did mention that this property is currently in the downtown urban renewal district, so even if we don't approve this, we don't see any tax dollars from that. The tax dollars would go to the urban renewal district, which is in fact, the City of Salem. The city council sits as the urban renewal district board, so we are not losing any potential tax dollars because of this. We don't gain anything, and I think, as the city manager said, it's an opportunity to continue to revitalize our downtown area. It's a multiple housing tax incentive program, so I would think we'd want to work with our partner from the City of Salem and approve this, and I will be voting aye.
Any other discussion? Paul?
My objections are the same as they were the last time we voted on this. I don't think this is a good idea. I don't think the City of Salem, the City Council of Salem cares what we think, as evidenced by the recent bridge vote and discussions. I don't know why we're going to partner with them on anything even as small as this. And I would ask a question, were the other jurisdictions contacted and told us was going to happen and given an opportunity to vocalize their support or opposition?
I can answer that, because I talked to the developer who assured me that he had reached out to each of the taxing jurisdictions.
Any other, oh, Director Kylo?
I'm done.
Director Hyun?
So I know I asked this last time, and I'm going to ask it again to refresh my memory. So a yes vote puts the money where? I know we don't get any of it. And a no vote puts it back in the hands of the city council? Is that what I heard?
If the board passes a yes vote, right, then the full tax abatement, if you look in the board plate, the full $71,424 is abated. If not, only the 29 percent that the city, as a taxing jurisdiction, represents would be abated. So it's really, it's the difference between the full amount, because when the board votes, if the board votes yes, with the city's vote, that puts the total taxing jurisdiction over the 51 percent threshold, which then the full tax abatement would be in effect. If not, only the city's portion would.
But then our portion would go back into the urban renewal area, which is controlled by the city council, is that correct?
Yes, yes, yeah, the taxes go to URA. The base has been frozen, which is why we don't receive any tax increment increases.
Director Lipold?
Thank you, Kathy. So, I read a lot about investing and ways to start a business. I read a lot of memoirs and bibliographies of successful people, so that way I can learn what they do. It's things like that that helped me break barriers of poverty, and I think it's the same things that can help other students do the same thing as well. Policies like the one we're talking about have been in place forever, long before, since I was born, just like Pers, just like, well, this law, just like everything else that screws over my generation. But we're not here to complain, we're here to be a part of the solution, right? Which is why I ran for office, which is why a lot of other people are stepping up to the plate. And so, I'm going to tell you a story. There was once a man who got a small million-dollar loan from his father and decided to build a large building in New York, using similar tax breaks like these. Now that man is worth $10 billion and is the president of the free world. Now, nothing against that man, I'm not saying anything pro or against him, but what I'm saying is, isn't morally right for us to be giving things, tax breaks out like this? Now, he's not wrong to ask, just like this builder isn't wrong to ask, but the real question is, should we be giving out money like this to people who can already afford to build the building? Should we be giving the money out to people who might not be able to start the business otherwise, but have dreams and aspire to be more? So, like, these apartments are already almost built, and so, while I 100 percent think that this builder is probably a great guy, don't blame him for asking, I would ask, it's just, should, in the long run, when we're looking at, are we creating a better world for our kids? What are we doing for our kids to make a better future for them? And giving them a chance to step up, especially when we have over half, over half of our students in poverty, you know, it's kind of like we're playing Monopoly and we're not giving them the rules, you know, and so, how should they know to come to a government body and ask? Who are we, seven people, to decide who gets $750,000 or not? Now, I want our students to be successful, and so I think if we made it easier for Oregon, in Oregon, for small businesses and local investors to operate, not tax them to death while giving large corporations discounts, then there would be no need for us to pick and choose who gets this money. So there's nothing against the builder, but it's more of a critic against the current tax structure in the state of Oregon. If this passes, then I urge you all to approve in giving me $750,000 when I come asking.
All right, I might add that the reason for this whole program was to entice builders to build in blighted areas that have never been built in properly before, and that, as was mentioned by the city earlier, allows us to buy the things that are in the park that the whole city enjoys, and that's the purpose of it. Director Blazi?
So I know this is probably the third time that we've debated this and discussed this, but after your remonstrance, I'd like to share some other ideas. I really, really appreciate your passion and your advocacy. However, in this situation, this is, again, it's a, it's a program designed to address urban blight, so in an urban renewal area, and if you look back 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, or even 10 years ago, in downtown Salem, it looked very, very different. We didn't have the same opportunities that we have in the downtown area. We didn't have the restaurants, we didn't have the shops, you know, the sidewalks literally rolled up and closed at four or five in the afternoon. It is a very, very different area, and part of an urban renewal area and a downtown area is to encourage multifamily housing, where people can live, and it's, and we've talked about this before, it's not low-income housing, we all acknowledge that, but it is addressing part of our shortage of multifamily housing. We have an extreme deficit in the City of Salem for multifamily housing. That is a goal of not just the city council and the mayor, but for the, you know, the planning commission, and we are a partner in that sense. We don't have to agree with what the city recently decided on the bridge, because I think a lot of us have heartburn with that, but we're all working towards a greater Salem and a better future for our children, and that includes a livable, walkable downtown area, and this is an incentive to developers to come in and address what's known as blight, and that blight was, you know, the paper mill that was there for years and years and years and years and sat there undeveloped. So this is, this is part of a larger picture, and I would encourage us to look at it from a larger perspective.
Is there further?
I think, those are, those are great comments, Director Blazi, and I guess I would, this is a little bit indirect, but I think that partnerships are very important, and having good partnerships with the City of Salem is key for us, and they have been a good partner, and, you know, when you talk about urban renewal dollars, the City of Salem really did, I don't want to say break ranks, but they really did do something different and innovative when they took $2 million in urban renewal dollars and put it into CTEC, which is, I think we all agree, in fact, I'll get to that later, but I'm going to be supporting this, because I think working in partnership with projects like this with the City of Salem benefits our kids in the long run.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lipold?
Commissioner, I've been promoted.
I'm sorry, Director.
No worries. Well, I just want to say, just really quick, I don't want to talk all night, but I don't think, I think it's awesome that we use that for CTEC. In fact, I think if this money was used for stuff like that, I mean, imagine what we could do for our city, that'd be fantastic. I just, I don't think this is at all like CTEC, but I could see why people are doing it, and I can see, under the way that system's currently set up, why we would spend money in this way. I just don't agree with the way the system's set up, so that's that. But I also just find it kind of hard to believe that we're trying so hard to promote downtown, because I live on the east side, and I don't know if any of you guys live on the east side, but, I mean, we're seeing, in the middle of our residential neighborhoods, multifamily units being built up, and you're talking about a part of our community that has lower home values, and people who are struggling to pass things on to their kids, I mean, when you have a multifamily, like, literally across the street, just from my house, for example, there's a giant places-owned multifamily. It's the center of a residential neighborhood. In fact, there are many places like that on the east side, and so, I guess I'm not city council or zoning commission or the zoning planning people, but I just think they could be doing a better job, and doing this in other ways, that's all.
Thank you, Director Lipold. We'll come to a vote on the item 201819-4. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes with four, five to two. Director Lipold and Director Kylo have voted nay. The remaining board voted aye.
Can I interrupt one minute?
You can.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment to our city manager, it's totally not even on the agenda, but in the mornings, when we make all the tough snow calls, I just want to say to the city staff, they are right there with us, who, and we almost can't make the decisions without them, because we're so jointly connected, so I think I've sent you an email on this already, but it is really reassuring in the mornings that the City of Salem is by our side, so if you take that back to your staff, because we have a couple more cold mornings.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
On behalf of my son, who has missed too many youth symphony practices because they happen on Monday night, come on, we can drive in snow, right? Come on.
Thank you for that. Okay, let's move on along. We have another action item. That is to adopt, oh, I had the number wrong before, to adopt Resolution Number 201819-7 to acquire real property and to resolve the condemnation action with St. Edward's Catholic Church.
It's okay, I've got this. Yeah. So, this action item is in relationship to the St. Edward Catholic Church and our condemnation action that was pending, and this is your action to acquire the real property. We have entered into a tentative agreement with the church, and this action is yours to formalize that agreement.
Thank you very much.
So I think it would be good to entertain a motion.
I move that the board adopts Resolution Number 201819-7 to acquire real property and to resolve the condemnation action with St. Edward Catholic Church.
Thank you, Director Lipold. Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed second. Second by Director Blazi. All in favor of adopting?
Discussion?
Discussion? Is there any further, further discussion? Director Lipold?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everybody, to St. Edward's for, I know it's a tough situation, you know, and we're all just one part of a community, just trying to do the right thing, and just say thank you to everyone during the process for being respectful and, you know, getting through it and working with each other on it, so that's all.
Thank you. Will someone make a motion, please? Sorry about that, sorry to disappoint you. Calling the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to the consent calendar. We have two items this time. Does anyone wish to pull an item? Seeing none, will vote on the consent calendar.
I move adoption of the consent calendar, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
Director Kylo seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed on both items in the consent calendar. Moving on this evening to student achievement.
All right, so the student achievement report tonight, you've got three items at your place setting, so it'd be great to get you out. Both Craig Sproles and Lynda Myers, our directors of academic achievement, are going to provide these, this presentation to you tonight, and they'll walk you through the information and then open it up for questions.
Thank you. We are excited to present to you a little bit about student achievement, and personally, I'm really excited to show you our performance indicator document. So Chair Goss and Vice Chair Blazi and board members, so Director Myers and I will be first talking a little bit about our results policy, some of that data which we've already presented to you, and we'll be talking through what that data looks like, and then, part of the results policy was actually to create an indicator document that would give us some idea about different levels in the organization and how our kids are doing, and so we'll present that as well as part of our presentation. And you do have three, as Superintendent Perry alluded to, you have three different documents at your table here. The main one that we'll be focusing on is entitled "Key Performance Indicators" in black. The one that you've already seen is called "The Academic Achievement Report Like This", which this should look familiar, hopefully. So there's our good-looking kids. So we'll be talking about the academic achievement policy a little bit, and just reviewing that quickly. We'll present some information about student achievement summary, what, how our students did last year, and then we'll be talking, the bulk of our conversation for Director Myers and I will be talking about the key performance indicators and what they tell us about the health of the system. And then if you have questions or comments, I'm sure you'll bring those forward as we're talking. So just to review, our academic achievement policy asks that we measure an increase in the percentage of students in the following subgroups, whom either exceed benchmarks in reading, writing, science, math, and English language attainment. And as we discussed in the past, the reading and writing scores are now put together into one English language arts score, and that's measured by our Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium test that all of our kids take. And then we were asked to break out the disaggregated data by racial and ethnic groups, students who are identified as having a disability, students who are English language learners, students who are identified as economically disadvantaged, which in our system, that's for students who qualify for free or reduced lunches, and then students who are also identified as talented and gifted. A second part of the policy focuses specifically on high school, and it asks to measure the percentage of students who are completing high school, and the policy says that should increase, and then our district dropout rate will be at or below the state average. So as we presented the data to you already, here's just a little summary of how our students performed last year. So overall, we saw relatively static achievement, so relatively flat achievement in ELA, math, and science. However, our ELA scores are higher than math, and they are commensurate to state averages. Our math scores are lower than the state average. So again, it's static over time when we compare our own students to our own students, but our ELA scores are higher. We are super excited that our high school graduation rates have continued to increase over time, and our dropout rates have decreased over time, and I had a conversation with Jay Weeks today, a little bit about why do you think that our dropout rates continue to decrease? our dropout rates continue to decrease? And he talked a lot about the vibrancy of our GED program, that we have one of the best capture rates, and so when kids don't graduate, when they don't walk in for, we have one of the best capture rates in the state through our Alt Ed program. So, it doesn't go as a high school graduation rate that gets attributed to Roberts, but we're doing a pretty good job capturing kids if they don't walk, and that, that is a tribute to that program. So, overall, what the data shows us is that our kids come in lower than most throughout the state, as measured by the kindergarten readiness assessment. The longer our kids stay in our system, we end up outperforming most districts in the state. So, it's this longitudinal view that we need to take. The second half of the academic achievement policy has charged Superintendent Perry with developing a data system that allows the board to monitor our progress towards increasing graduation rates and lowering dropout rates, and so that's our ultimate benchmark. And the board charged us with creating key data points such as third grade reading, chronic absenteeism, and engagement in programs which can boost the graduation rate, and to create an early warning system for students who have the potential to drop out. So, that's what we've done, and that's what I am strangely excited about. So, this is our key priority indicator document that we've worked hard on as a district leadership team. The thing to remember with this document, it's both an externally facing document in that it tells our community what's important to us, but it's also an internally facing document that we can tell our school leaders and teachers, the things you measure are the things you value. We deeply believe that, and so we're telling people, this is what we measure. You can see the little, what's the graduation hat called?
Mortar board.
The mortar board, I always forget that for some reason. The mortar board are our key indicators, and so our performance data gives a lot of data on one sheet, but the mortar board is where we're telling people that, we believe that that is a key leading indicator. And these are the points that we'd like to focus on. Kindergarten attendance, and I'll explain that one in just a minute. Third and fifth grade reading, again, these are key leading indicators to whether students will be successful in high school. Seventh grade language acquisition, and we're measuring that if they've exited from being an EL student, being identified as an English language learner, so they've gained proficiency. Eighth grade mathematics, which is a key indicator for whether they'll be successful in Algebra I, which is a key indicator for graduation, and then our ninth grade on-track status. So, what I'll do with the key indicators, I'll take the elementary part, since that's kind of my purview, and then Linda will jump in here about halfway, so we'll just go left to right and really briefly talk about each indicator. So, for kindergarten attendance, there's a lot of research about attendance in general, but some interesting research has come out in September and October, just those first eight weeks of school. Students who have chronic absenteeism during that time are 12 times less likely to graduate. So, kinder attendance sets the standard for whether students will succeed later on. The exciting thing about kinder attendance is highly malleable, so when we reach out to those families, when we provide supports for them, when we can get those kids re-engaged and back in school, that changes their trajectory. So, we deeply believe that kinder attendance is a strong indicator for a long time down, 12 years down, whether those kids will walk or not. Moving over into our English language literacy, and notice in our indicators, we highlighted English language literacy and Spanish literacy, because we have Spanish literacy in 19 of our elementary schools. Our kindergarten first and second grade students are learning in their native language, which is Spanish for those students. We also have dual-language schools where kids are learning simultaneous bilingual literacy, English and Spanish, so we thought it was important to highlight that. That's really something for our district to be proud of. We have an asset here in the district, in a linguistic asset, and we wanted to highlight that. So, you can see our kindergarteners come in quite a bit lower than the state average, as measured by the kindergarten readiness assessment. So, our, our students have 4.9 sounds, and the state on the average has, their students come in with 8.2. That also gives a little orientation, we have about 1,000 students in our preschool programs, and we think that's a good investment, that's a good long-term investment, because it prepares those kids to be more successful when they get to school. The next category over then is our Spanish, and what might pop out to you, it popped out to me, is our kids appear to be much higher readers in Spanish than in English. If you look at the proficiency scores, 47, 48, and 62 versus 34, 35, and 26. So, one of the interesting things with Spanish is phonetically, Spanish is much easier to learn to read than English. English has all of these rules, that you have a long A and a short A, and you put an E on the end, and it changes this word, and it changes the sound of this word, this letter in the middle of the word. So, it has all of these rules that Spanish doesn't have. So, kids can phonetically decode in Spanish at a much quicker rate. However, Spanish takes longer to learn comprehension, because you have to learn the vocabulary that goes with it and the grammatical rules that make it make sense. So, it takes longer to learn in that part. So, if we get over, right in the middle of our performance indicators here, we have benchmark in reading and math. Thanks for turning the pages.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's very helpful. In reading and math, and this is where we, we have some disaggregated data here, because we think it's important to look at, not all of our kids are performing at the exact same rate, and if you just squash them into one percentage, you don't necessarily see the disaggregated groups. So, here you can see, here's our third grade Smarter Balance reading scores, and, and some things that pop out here are our Pacific Islander students, 14% of them are readers by the end of the third grade, according to this measurement. That's a critical point for us to think about, because we know that reading by the end of your third grade, if you can read proficiently, you have six times higher rate of high school graduation than if you don't. It doesn't mean that you can't still graduate, but it means that it's going to be harder moving forward. The other data point to remember with the Smarter Balance test is, this is a test in English, and the, the 20 schools or so that I mentioned before, their primary language for a chunk of those kids has been in Spanish. So, they, they, we teach them in Spanish and then test them in English for reading and writing. So, there's, it takes a little while for that to show up in our scores. Then, when we look at our SBAQ scores for fifth grade, you can see, of course, they've jumped, that we have kids over time gaining proficiency the longer they stay in our system in our fifth grade, and we feel like this is a particularly important data point, because this is what prepares kids to be able to launch them to be successful in middle school. And I'll turn the clicker over to Director Myers.
All right, so we are still in the middle benchmark reading and math column, and so looking at eighth grade math, and as a reminder, we have identified eighth grade math as a priority indicator, because readiness for Algebra I is still one of the greatest indicators for earning the essential requirements for diploma, both in the essential skills area of math and in credit attainment. So, in looking at our eighth grade scores, students have to complete three credits of math in high school, all at Algebra I and higher, and so our eighth grade scores are indicative of who is prepared to do that. You'll notice, overall, we don't have a crosshatch on this, but the highest bar on there is still, is our white students, but still only at 25%. So, even though that bar looks significantly higher than the others, we do acknowledge that that is still not where we want to be in a quarter of our kids demonstrating proficiency by the end of eighth grade. And you will see the significant gap in discrepancies between our white students and the other students demonstrated on that chart. This is a different kind of performance indicator, so moving over to the column entitled "Language Acquisition", so this has to do with our students who are learning English as their second language, and what it means for them to be on track to language proficiency. So, we have identified this as a priority indicator, because our own internal data demonstrates that students who enroll in high school that have not yet exited out of an EL program have a significant, significant decrease in graduation rates. So, we have got to identify, we have got to make it a priority to target getting our students proficient in English and exited out of programming before they enter high school. So, we've set our target at the end of seventh grade, and Oregon Department of Education provides a measure for us that they call "on-track status", that is on-track to learning English, not to be confused with being on-track to graduation. And ODE measures being on-track, there are two variables that they weigh one against another. They look at the number of years that a child has been in an EL program, so how long have they been receiving services, and what level of mastery do they have on the ALPA, the English Language Proficiency Assessment. And those two variables correlated together determine whether or not a child is considered on-track, according to ODE variables. So, about 53% of our elementary students are considered on-track, and that number has been steady for a few years. When you look at middle schoolers, just about 30% of our middle school students are on-track in EL proficiency, and less than 25% of our high school students are considered on-track. So, this is a priority indicator for us, and as we look backwards at our areas of success, this is a place where we need to improve and need to beef up our programming, and have some conversations about what are the specific strategies we will put in place to address this issue. All right, then, freshman success. So, I need to provide some definitions for you. This is the second to the last column on your performance indicator sheet. Ninth grade on-track success is still considered the best predictor of high school graduation. Yes, we care about eighth grade math, yes, we care about third grade reading, but being on-track at the end of your ninth grade year is statistically the best indicator for whether or not you will make it across the stage with a, with a high school diploma. So, the graph that is up here on the screen demonstrates the division by subgroup of ODE's definition of on-track. So, those are the percentages of students who have earned six credits by the end of their freshman year. So, Oregon high school diploma requires you to have 24 credits in order to graduate. Six credits per year would mathematically make you, put you on-track. Our on-track number for 2017-18 was 87.2%. That's almost three percentage points higher than it was the previous year. The reason that 87.2% number is so important, statistically, historically in this district, our high school grad rates have never been higher than our ninth grade on-track rates. That is our first sort of litmus test, our first glimpse into the future for what our grad rates will be three years from now when those kids walk across the stage. So, 87.2 is a really strong showing, and, you know, we'd love to do as much as we can to, to keep those numbers stable. When we talk about freshman success, I just want to provide you some additional context, because on the performance indicator sheet in that second to the last column, there are some different definitions, and that's because we have freshman success teams, or ninth grade success teams, in our high schools. And those are groups of people who are tracking and monitoring our ninth graders, and yes, they are looking at the number of credits earned, just like ODE looks at, but they are also looking at attendance, they're looking at behaviors, so we're measuring some social emotional skills. So, when you hear us talk about freshman success teams and on-track, we have layered some additional parameters on that, on top of what ODE defines as being on-track in ninth grade. So, I just wanted to clarify, and we'll try to make sure that we continue to make that clarification for you when we're talking about on-track status for our students. All right, here is our four-year graduation data, broken apart by subgroup. You will notice the decrease in our African-American Black students from 59.5% down to 51.1%. There are, our 12th graders who identify as African-American or Black range between 45 and 60 students, and the only reason I, I bring that up is because while an 8% drop is alarming and not okay, I also want to quantify that for you, in that we're looking at, you know, a handful of kids that we would have hoped got across the stage that didn't. So, I'm not standing in front of you saying that that's good enough, because it's not, but I also want to make sure that you have some perspective on how deep that issue actually goes. We are very pleased with the growth in our Hispanic rates, our white students graduated at a good rate, and we bumped up almost 15 percentage points in our Pacific Islander population. So, some additional data points that are now in this final column, high school completion, on your chart, down at the bottom, let me draw your attention to the very bottom right-hand corner. Out of the students that graduated in four years, 211 of them graduated with the seal of bilingual literacy. Earning that seal requires a student to demonstrate competencies in a language other than English in four areas, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Every comprehensive high school had at least one graduate with the seal of bilingual literacy, and McKay had 95. That might be the highest number in the state. I heard that as a rumor, I haven't actually verified that, but tremendous, tremendous success at McKay with students pursuing and earning the seal of bilingual literacy. Finally, next to that seal of bilingual literacy number, you'll see the number of GEDs that were awarded. We had 133 students earn a GED in 2018. We celebrate completion of a GED, because for a majority of our students who earn a GED, they are also still eligible for Oregon Promise, which means that they can attend an Oregon Community College and receive either free or reduced tuition. So, earning a GED rather than an Oregon diploma does not disqualify them from qualifying for Oregon Promise. So, that continues to open some avenues for students after high school.
Can I just call attention to one part of that?
Yep.
So, you can notice the category at the bottom, that's why seventh grade exiting in ELs is so important. That's the data point that brought our district attention to that as a key indicator, because there are lowest performing groups to be able to graduate within four years, so that's something we want to arrest and get in front of.
And the difference between a student who is qualified as an English language learner in high school versus a student who would basically be flagged as a previous English learner, it's about 30 percentage points different. It is incredibly significant. So, exiting, exiting kids out of our EL programs, getting them proficient before they start ninth grade is really important. Marty?
So, 30% had ELL before that grade?
So, we, yeah, I can actually get you the numbers, but I'm saying when you look at the percentage points, the percentage of students who graduate who were in EL programs but exited prior to high school is, it's closer to 50 or 60. I'd have to look and get you the actual number, and I can pull that, but it was, the data is very discrepant. It forces us to consider exiting kids and getting them proficient.
So, I've been just curious, how many maybe don't come to our district until they're in ninth grade, so we wouldn't have an opportunity to help them before?
So, that's, thank you for asking that, because that's a really good question. Right, and we sort of entered the data analysis with an assumption that we probably were looking at a significant population of newcomers, and that perhaps that was skewing our data, for lack of a better term, and that's actually not the case. The number and the percentage of newcomers in our high school population is very small. So, the vast majority of students in EL programs in high school are students who are what we would consider a long-term EL, students who have actually been in program five years or longer.
Thank you.
And finally, this is just a visualization of our dropout rate over time. So, this dropout rate, remember, captures students in grades nine through 12 who started in a cohort in a Salem Kaiser School but did not complete or transfer to another high school. So, this is, this includes all of our non-completers, not just seniors who didn't complete. So, this is, now you can see, if you're following the red line, which is the district numbers, we've now decreased, since 2015-16, we've had a steady decrease of our dropout rate, and we have now been below the state average in dropouts for two years. So, we're really proud of that as well. And that, Craig already alluded to the reasoning behind that in the amount of kids that we catch in GEDs or completions prior to their four-year cohort. So, questions specifically about any of this new information or about the organization of this document? Jesse?
Jim was first.
Jim, sorry, didn't see your finger.
So, on this chart, when you get to the EZCBM overall reading measures, why the decrease to second grade?
And that's because complexity of the text, so it gets harder. So, the kindergarten is based, for EZCBM is a phoneme, so it's, they're not, they're not reading, they're listening to parts of the word and repeating it, and as the text gets more complex, our kids score lower. So, it goes from hearing the words to reading independent words, to reading sentences, to putting sentences together. So, as, as a complexity, we struggle.
So, in the middle one on the benchmark reading math, eighth grade math, why the 5% to 6% drop-off? Do we know? five to six percent drop-off? Do we know?
From, from year to year?
Yeah.
Or from two years ago? I don't know.
I don't know.
Because I'm also looking at our state report card online right now, the Department of Ed's new one.
Mm-hmm.
And for our grades three through eight, individual student progress, they rank us as average. And I'd like to see that be ticked over to high. So I think we're doing great. I mean, I can see some growth and I see the growth in the subgroups, but I am concerned about that eighth grade drop-off. And I know it's an S-Back test. So I know we're doing some stuff in our formative and interim assessments, but I am worried about that and I would like to see those individual student progress, you know, we should be above the average of the state.
Yep.
But I do see where you're talking about the growth, where you take that at kindergarten and then you're looking at them at third grade. Our sub-growth, our subgroup growth is moving along, but we're also, I mean, some of these numbers are, are low and low across the state. So it's not unique just to Salem Kaiser, but I think for our black and African-American students, we just, we, we gotta do better.
Yeah. Yeah, we agree. And I think, thinking about it, Jim, like holistically, our, our kids need to grow more because they come in.
At a lower level, right.
So if we don't ever have a growth, a growth that's higher, they'll never, we will always be lower. So.
And, and just the one thing on the four-year cohort group, you've got the economically disadvantaged flipped, the lines are flipped.
Okay.
All the other ones, you've got silver on top and I'm going by the color, silver on top, gold. On that one, you've got gold on top, silver on the bottom. Just, and I don't know if the numbers are right or if the, see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know what that is. You can flip it up there.
Nice guess.
We can, we can get that to you. Yeah, the bars are flip-flopped.
So I don't know if we're at seventy-two point one in sixteen seventeen or if we're at sixteen, so.
Good question. I don't know. We can.
Because I'm assuming that color chart flows over from the key performance one. Sixteen seventeen is the gray-silver. Yeah, okay.
Other questions?
I just want to second everything Jim said because he's right. And then I also wanted to say, I wanted to ask you, can we, can we verify the numbers of the seal of literacy?
Whether the ninety-five was a high.
Yeah. Because if, if it is, then that's awesome. That's something that we can celebrate and kind of push forward and then, yeah.
Yes, we can, we can verify that.
We can.
See, I, I started that rumor. So I'm pretty sure that it's true, but it was just a conversation with a school in Portland that typically produces. And the thing we are interesting about McKay is it's not one of our dual-language schools. Those kids are bringing that literacy through our elementary schools with our Lit Squared programs, building on it and then still being able to perform at those high rates, which is interesting.
And as the seal of biliteracy garners some more attention and becomes more well-known, it has allowed us to participate in some really meaningful conversations in some of our other high schools, ensuring that we extend opportunities to students that may be participating in one of our programs, but also ensuring that we offer the opportunity to students who do bring in a heritage language and that whether they're sitting in one of our advanced language courses or not, they may have the skill set, demonstrate and earn a seal of biliteracy on their diploma. So.
Yeah, no, I think that's awesome. And then I had another question. This is probably something I've been told a thousand times as well as all of us, but when we were talking about the testing for kids when they were younger and having it not be in Spanish, is there like a good reason as to why it's not in Spanish or is it just not in Spanish?
For that third grade S-Back test?
Yeah.
It's the rules.
There's a lot of reasons. I don't know how many of them are good. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a strong feeling that, that kids in, in our English dominant society, that we want to make sure that kids are moving toward English proficiency. So that was the desire. There are some school districts that have created their own Spanish version of the S-Back that they give to kids as well to be able to.
Is that something we could do? Is that, I don't know.
It's pretty expensive for us.
I don't know that we could give the S-Back and honestly, I wonder, the S-Back takes a long time to take and I would hate to, to take away another week of instruction to give another test, but I think we could do a better, there's other assessments out there like the Stamp Four S.E., which is developed by U of O., which is a one-day test, which can give us an idea of how kids are doing in Spanish that, that might give us some information and we're exploring that.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Just a couple of quick questions. Obviously, our African-American, black student and American Indian four-year cohort members are, like you said, need, need focus. I thought the state had a program that was being funded for our American Indian students, specifically for graduation rates and that the state as a whole was showing great progress. I'm, I'm curious as to whether we're participating in that program and.
So I don't, I happen to coordinate some of the Indian education programs. We've got a great Indian ed team and we have a pretty healthy funding source with federal grants, but I'm not, I'm not the expert and I would have to do some asking about what we're participating in as far as state-level initiatives and.
And it could be that the funding is coming from the feds, but I just recall, while doing some work at Department of Ed, that there was a new incentive, it was a governor's priority, it was a state priority to focus on American Indian graduation rates and discrepancies, you know, just in general. So I thought, I assumed that we were participating in that. So I'm just, I'm surprised that we had a, and as you said, the numbers are relatively low compared to other populations, but an eight percent decrease in an area that we've been putting focus on. And then I did have just two other questions without trying to tell us exactly what the percentages are. You've presented sixteen seventeen seventeen eighteen for our district. How do we compare to like-sized districts in some of these, you know, broad categories? So if we're only at fifty percent in certain areas, how do we compare to other like-sized districts, whether it's Portland Public or?
Do you want to talk about your comparison?
Yeah, I love those.
Compared to Beaver Town.
So there's a, so Forecast Five is a, is a program that allows us to identify target districts and we can identify them in a variety of ways. The box plots that we looked at in the, in the original student achievement report gives us some evidence of that. It's, it's not going to be on the, on the slides unfortunately.
Yeah, you did point that out to us.
Yeah, but it, but it tells us a little bit, but that are, these, the ones that look like this, but these actually aren't just comparator districts. These are all districts in Oregon. So we can easily, if it would be interesting to the board and you would like that information, we can target, we can target every district that has over ten thousand students, which is an interesting comparator. There's twelve or thirteen of them.
Thirteen.
Some of them aren't very like us, but, but some of them are. To be able to see, and I think what you would see over time is our kids start lower and make progress at a higher rate than most other districts in the state. And we end in the mid to higher quintile of that over time. But that's the trajectory of the whole system.
But that is a great point that they, they maybe start a little further behind, but they make more, more progress over time. So that's, that's a good reminder.
Yeah, and that's partially because of our model as well. Remember, we're teaching in Spanish for a chunk of our kids and testing in English. So it takes them a little longer to be able to show proficiency in English before they can show proficiency in something like math. To be able to navigate the test, you have to be able to read the test.
I just have one last question.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the question I think I ask each time. Again, you pointed out the focus on ninth grade success. So we have, we have lots of wraparound services. We have, if they're not on track to complete, say, the two math classes or the six credits in ninth grade, but how do we catch them? I always ask this. How do we catch them before they get to ninth grade? And we know that they're not ready for Algebra I or they're not ready for geometry. Because if they're not ready to start ninth grade and they don't succeed in ninth grade, how are we catching them before they get to ninth grade?
Yeah, so our middle school team actually is doing some pretty robust work in investing in MTSS, so multi-tiered systems of support, and actually engaging teams in place at the middle school level that are looking at students. We may identify them through one of our screeners. So we do an assessment. Every child takes an assessment in reading and math. And so we can identify kids that appear not to be on track as soon as they come to the middle school in sixth grade. We do that for every student. And then there are multiple ways in which we can respond. That may be an additional course in their schedule, so a support course in addition to their core math or, or reading class. But there are also some creative ways where middle school teams are looking at how can they respond in, whether it's tutoring, whether it's some sort of relationship-based. Some of our issues, our kids can be successful when they come, but they're not at school on a regular basis. And so we've worked to establish better connections with families. So we're in what we call year zero at the middle school level, but I'm pleased with the direction. The administrators and Matt Biandi, as the level director, has done a great job of really pushing exactly what you're talking about. How are we going to identify the kids and ensure that we get them ready to be successful in ninth grade?
Is that consistent across the district? I know when you, we were talking about this last year, there were some middle schools who were participating, some we were encouraging, some weren't quite there yet. Are we on?
Yep. So with this being year zero, we have allowed schools to sort of interact at whatever level they have teams prepared to interact with. And we have actually just in the training last week, set the expectation. So every middle school throughout the course of next year will implement essentially what we call a twenty percent team, which means how are we identifying the twenty percent of students who are at risk and how are we choosing to intervene and respond for those kids on an individual basis? Thank you.
Chuck?
You know, just a lot of intriguing data and my comment or question was kind of touched on by Sharon just a second ago in your answer, but, excuse me, I look under the benchmark reading and math, that column, and the most compelling statistic that I find on this whole page is only thirteen percent of students who fail a math course in middle school will go on to earn a high school diploma. Just seems to me that that in itself really should red-flag somebody to figure out who that eighty-seven percent are at eighth grade that aren't going to graduate. We know eighty-seven percent of the kids who fail one math class aren't going to graduate based on this. And so I think you talked a little bit about some of the things.
How to catch them.
But to me, that seems like a real indicator and a good way to tag kids that are going to need some help to get across the stage.
And that kind of data that, I didn't specifically talk about this when I was addressing Sharon's question, but not only do we use screener data to identify who has deficient skills, but we also then at six weeks can pull initial progress reports and pull F data or even D data and identify, okay, who are the kids that maybe didn't pop with a deficient skillset on a screener assessment, but for some reason aren't performing well in the class and aren't, aren't earning a passing grade. And so those twenty percent teams can also intervene with those kids. So.
To me, that's a stat that just leaps out on this page, that only thirteen percent of the kids who fail a class will graduate.
Yep.
Wow.
Math, yep.
And of course, it doesn't start in middle school. That's the hard, that's the hard part. Like we, there's a saying, you can't intervene your way out of a core problem. So if our kids aren't in core math instruction coming to middle school prepared to be successful, we can't run enough intervention programs to pick up, you know, right now, Director Biandi could probably tell us how many kids would qualify for math interventions in the middle school. It's way too high. So that's what we're trying to do. So Linda mentioned MTSS is year zero this year, year one. Moving forward, well, at the elementary level, we're year zero next year. So we're one year behind trying to create better vertical integration. And the board's support of a math curriculum, integrated math curriculum where all kids have access and all kids can begin learning at an earlier age will hopefully ripple up through as well.
Thanks.
I was looking at the, the English, English Language Arts S-Back for third and fifth grade and I was wondering what your thoughts are on why our English language learners, looks like it dropped, it went from fifteen point two for third grade to down to seven percent. Then for fifth grade, it went from nineteen point five percent down to seven and a half percent. And even though it looked, doesn't look as big on the chart, this is a large chunk of our students. So I was just wondering why, if, why this is happening.
And I wish I had, I wish I had a good answer for as to why it's happening. I'm not, I don't. And I, but I think that you're a hundred percent right, especially third grade. Because the thing to remember with English language learners, as they attain proficiency, then they're no longer categorized. So our, the kids who were once an English language learner aren't categorized as that. And so those, they are exited from that and then the rates continue on that. So I'm not sure.
Could we get something later, maybe digging a little bit deeper into that?
We can. I could come up with a theory of action or a hypothesis as to why it is or why we would guess. It's a little bit looking in the rearview mirror, but I think it's a good question.
Yeah, well, I guess to know for this next year, how we can.
What we are doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would love that.
It's a good question.
Other comments or discussion? Thank you very much for a good report.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you.
The last topic we have is superintendent evaluation process. This evening, we aren't going to be evaluating our superintendent, but we did want the public to understand the process we go through. It's the board's responsibility to evaluate the superintendent's performance each year according to superintendent's contract and our own board policy. Evaluation is for the past year, so the board is evaluating for the two-seventeen, two-eighteen school year, not for the current. The superintendent is evaluated on reasonable progress toward accomplishment of the board's result policies on academic achievement and operating within boundaries established in the board's executive limitation. The information the board uses for evaluations comes from the executive limitation. There's twelve of those that we have now. The strategic plan for the district as well as student achievement reports presented to the board, similar to what we looked at tonight. The evaluation is to be completed by March fifteenth of each year. However, because our timeline needed to be adjusted a bit to our long meeting last time on February twelfth, the superintendent has agreed to extend the process beyond the March fifteenth deadline if needed. At this time, we plan to hold the valuation in executive session for ORS one-nine-two dot six-six-zero-two-I on March twelfth. The board may vote on acceptance of the valuation in open session on March twelfth, again, depending on if we adjust the timeline any further than we already have. Once the valuation is complete, a summary of the valuation will be made available to the public. That just about concludes our agenda. In fact, it does include it. And I thank you for coming tonight.
Chair Gosh?
Yes.
Could I, sometimes we have time for board members to share events and I don't want to share anything other than this document. Mountain West has invested in putting together the story and history of CTEC. And this is going to be going to all the school boards in the state and nation. It's going to be going to all the state legislators, to Congress. But it's a story of how this community came together to create CTEC and it's a model for a public-private partnership. And so I'm going to pass these out to the board members and you can have them. And thanks for your support of CTEC.
Well, thank you very much. And we certainly know that the city has appreciated CTEC and we send great advantages to it. And now back to the adjournment. This meeting tonight is over and I thank you so much for coming. And I'm glad you did. Drive careful on the way home. It's cold out.
And we'll start the budget committee at seven-twenty?
Yeah, we'll take a little break in between.
I'm so sorry, Chuck. We just startled Chuck with the gavel. We're going to call to order the budget committee meeting for the Salem Kaiser School Board, I'm sorry, public schools for the meeting of February twenty- I'm sorry, Public Schools, for the meeting of February 26. And we're going to start with the attendance. And it looks like we have all of the Budget Committee members, with the exception of Adam Kohler, Kathleen Harder, who is trying to call in. And it sounds like she's on the line now.
I'm here.
Okay, great. So, we have Kathleen. And then, we also are missing Tyson, Tyson Pruitt. And I would like to just quickly introduce, I was going to introduce our two newest members, but one is not here. So, we'll introduce and say welcome to Adriana Miranda. Thank you for joining the Budget Committee. We appreciate the time and service.
Thank you.
Okay. And for this evening, we're just going to go over, we're going to have an introduction to budget law and the development process. And then, we're going to discuss the role of the Budget Committee. And then, we're going to have a discussion about equity-focused budget process and a report on some federal programs. And then, just discuss our calendar. And we'll turn it over to Mike Wolf. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Thank you.
Mike, could you do a quick introduction for the new members of who will be the budget? Probably Sarah mostly.
Yes.
Sorry. Here, let me introduce Sarah.
Yes, let me introduce her ahead. Our Director of Budget and Finance, Financial Services. And is that good? Yep, that's good. And Sarah's team is actually, right, the driving force behind putting the document together. And so, they're always listening intently as to the conversations during the Budget Committee. So, what I would like to do is just orient you to the packet of information that you have and then go over a little bit of it. And then, that'll lead into the presentation tonight. So, this is going to be hard, a little hard for Kathleen. But Kathleen, if you take a look at the PowerPoint slide, which has the 2019-21 Budget Development Process on it, this is really just to give you a high-level overview of the activities that really began around October for us. And you can see the different tracks of engagement where we're doing, as the budget development process kicks in, there's departmental and program reviews that work through, basically developing a current service-level baseline budget in the February timeframe, which is where we are now. Lots of cabinet-level discussions. During the beginning of the biennium, which is this year, it's always, we're always tracking the legislative process. And we have individuals, Director Green in particular, and others that are very, very in tune with what's going on at the legislature. And, well, Adrienne is actually part of the legislative process, so we appreciate that as well. So, you can see how that tracks. We've already received the Governor's Recommended Budget. We believe the co-chairs, at least framework budget, will be coming out in March, which is right on time for us. But basically, what this illustrates is as we develop the superintendent's proposed budget, which will be presented to you on April 23rd, we may or may not have a dedicated revenue number from the legislature. Because if you track through the Joint Ways and Means Committee, while we're legally mandated, the board is, to adopt a budget no later than June 30th, the legislature can actually extend their session and go beyond the June 30th. In either case, which is what happened to us in this current biennium, we built our budget on an $8.1 billion assumption, but actually, in the end, it was $8.2 billion. So, there was another $100 million, which we came back with a supplemental budget subsequently and then carried that forward. So, that's what this is intended to convey. If you go to the memo from me to you around Budget Committee roles and responsibilities, I'd like to call out just a few. This is really a compilation from several different sources. One of the expert sources that we like to use in all of this is a group called the Oregon School Boards Association, which really does a great job at helping boards through the budgeting process. But we ask three questions. What is the Budget Committee and what are the main duties? And so, just to highlight a few of these, the purpose of the Budget Committee really is described in Number Four, which is to receive the budget message from the superintendent and the proposed budget and to provide the public with an opportunity to ask questions and comment on the budget. So, it's to, you will review or revise and approve the budget document and formally set the tax rate. So, the way the evolution of the budget goes, we're developing it. It comes to you through the superintendent as a proposed budget. You review, either modify or not, and approve it. So, it goes from proposed to approved. And then, it moves to the board for final adoption by June 30th. Second question is, what sorts of things can the Budget Committee discuss like tonight before you become the 1920 Budget Committee, which you're not yet? And if you flip that over to the next page, you can receive training on the Budget Committee process, which is what we're going over a little bit tonight. Calendar, expectations for committee members, orientation on the district, the organization, its various departments or programs, staffing, and on activities or services that we provide. And then, what kinds of things can the Budget Committee not discuss before the superintendent's budget message and before you receive the proposed budget? It's really all the specifics, the specific estimates on revenue, the specific estimates on expenditures or appropriation amounts, the question to whether we would fund specific programs or how we would spend specific dollars, questions around imposing any tax, because you're just not ready yet. You're not the 1920 Budget Committee and you don't have the proposed budget. And then, and of course, any deliberation on the proposed budget must take place at a properly advertised public meeting. That's really the essence of the Oregon Public Budget Law, and that's to engage the public so that they have open access to the conversations for the Budget Committee. And there's some resources, also websites listed. The next document is BG 12, which is Board Governance.
Mike?
Yeah.
Sorry. Just real quick, I did want to mention one thing. And we talked about this at the end of last year's Budget Committee, and we kind of wrestled with, how do we provide the Budget Committee with information on programs, updates? And I think over the last year, Alice has been trying to send out correspondence to the Budget Committee about when the school board has a meeting and we get an update on a program like we received tonight. So, there's a lot of that information out there that you can view. You can go back and view it. Or we have reports. So, we have a lot of reports on academic achievement and various programs. Those were a lot of questions that were raised last year. Well, how are we actually doing? If we're putting this much money into this program, how successful is it? So, there is a lot of information out there and available. And that's one of the things we talked about as a Budget Committee member, familiarizing yourself with those programs as much as you can before you walk into, you know, the April, the May meetings and we're actually deliberating on the budget. Try to familiarize yourself prior to those meetings on some of the general programs.
Great. And then, so Board Governance 12, Policy 12, is really the Budget Committee job description. And of course, you're a 14-member body. I'd just like to highlight a few of the job description elements. Under Number One, One C, conduct a Budget Committee meeting only if a majority of the members are present. The magic number is eight. So, Budget Committee needs to have eight members to actually hold a meeting. And there's also, that also, eight is the majority vote. So, you will need eight votes in the affirmative to pass any resolution regarding the budget. Well, here to budget law, you need to wait until the superintendent's budget message is presented in a public meeting before discussing issues that we just talked about. So, this is, kind of reiterates a bit what we just talked about. Also, the third element here really talks about sort of attendance and interactions between committee members. And you can sort of see everything from, as Director Blasi said, attend and be prepared for the meetings. And also, near the end, make every reasonable effort to protect the integrity and promote the positive image of the district and one another and respect the decisions of the full committee, just to pull out a few. Then, we have two executive limitations, which were mentioned as part of the superintendent's evaluation process during the board meeting. We called out the two that are relevant to the budget and financing, EL 7. Again, these are written in the negative, so it's an interesting conversation. But basically, what it says is the superintendent shall not present to the board a recommended budget that is not consistent with the board's established priorities. I'm just calling out a few, which fails to adequately describe proposed expenditures, fails to disclose budget planning assumptions, fails to reflect anticipated changes in employee compensation, including inflationary adjustments, step increases, and such. So, that just gives you a flavor of EL 7, which is really focused on the budgeting and financial planning, which leads to EL 8, which is the financial administration. And again, that's mostly around the superintendent shall not cause or allow a material deviation from the annual budget or budget policy adopted by the board. In other words, once the board, once the Budget Committee approves and the board adopts, that's our marching orders. So, we stay within those approvals and the adoption until such time as we come to the board later, maybe through a supplemental or through resolution. We recently came to the board with respect to spending this year's money on additional buses to support the boundary adjustment process. So, that requires board approval to do that. So, once it's adopted, that's the framework upon which the organization operates. And then, if we need to, we come back to the board for resolution and approval. And then, the last piece is just the meeting schedule and how we'll proceed through board adoption of the budget. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the material.
Can I just make a comment? We would likely vote on a chair or vice chair either at the March 19th or the April 23rd meeting for the 1920 Vice Chair, Chair and Vice Chair. And March 19th, we're thinking of more of an information session again on some of the topics ahead of the budget process.
So, when would be the appropriate time to discuss changes in how we make changes? You know?
The process.
Right. Because I have some ideas on, I think, a way it'll make it more, it'll just make more sense than the way we're doing it right now.
I think if we talk about those offline, definitely, because we did kind of struggle with how to propose changes and how to vote. And I think maybe it just wasn't clear to all of us, the process. So, we can definitely talk about that offline and come up with a suggestion on how to go about doing that that might be smoother than last year.
Typically, those, as Director Blasi said, typically, those types of conversations work through committee leadership and then are brought back to the full committee.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, just a quick flyover of the budget document. I brought some extras in case you didn't bring yours, just to show you that tonight, you're going to receive a presentation over multiple funds within the budget document. We have seven funds in our total budget, and they're tabbed out. And it goes from the 100 series through the 700 series. And the General Operating Fund is really the focus of the Budget Committee. And the reason for that is if you were to flip over to Special Revenue Funds, Tab 200, you'd see at the bottom, there's an asterisk, which all of the funds outside of the General Funds, so the six outside of the General Fund, are there for a reason. They're either restricted, committed, or assigned funds. And what that means is that, for instance, the Special Revenue Fund may only be used as specified by law, by contract, by the school board, or stipulated by district policy. In other words, these funds cannot be used for general operations of the school district. They have special purposes. And so, that's why we do try to focus the conversation around the General Operating Fund more often than not. But they're so intertwined that it's really important to understand how they all fit together to serve students. And tonight, you'll hear a presentation about that. So, with that, if there are no questions, I would be happy to turn it over to my colleagues.
All right. So, the next part of the presentation, and I believe these are going to kind of go together with an equity-focused budget process and the federal programs report. And Director Linda Myers and Director Craig Sprouls will be presenting this, the section, and sorry, Cynthia Richardson, our Director of Equity Access and Advancement. And our goal is to really center on the equity conversation tonight. And one of the things, just a sidebar, we've been talking a lot about is do we start every district committee with an equity training? Because it was helpful in the boundary change process. So, that's what they're up to tonight. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. So, what we'll talk a little bit tonight is equity at large in the district. And so, when we approach a decision, how do we frame that through an equitable lens? Some of what we'll talk about, we'll then drill down and apply more specifically to the budget process. But we thought just a general orientation as to when we use the word equity. It's such a broad word. So, what are we talking about? And how do we frame our decision-making internally from an equity stance and an equity perspective? And the person to get us started with that is our Director of Equity Achievement and Student Advancement, Cynthia Richardson. And so, Cynthia will talk a little bit about equity at large. I'll talk about how we can have these discussions together. And then, Linda and I will talk about how to apply this to the budget process moving forward.
So, what is equity? The word equity is used frequently in different kinds of meetings across the district when we discuss many different topics. It's a word that is used a lot, but it means very different things to different people. As a district, we are working to make, include consideration for multiple stakeholder groups in our decision-making. This might include people of different races, people that speak different languages, or those who have special cognitive or physical disabilities. Making equitable decisions requires us to listen. It requires us to listen and to learn about specific individual needs of students and to provide accommodations to access to meet those needs. Salem Kaiser's definition of equity. This language comes from our district equity policy and the school board's equity lens. The first statement talks about the difference between equity and equality. Bullet One reads, equity in the Salem Kaiser School District will not be confused with equality, where all students are treated the same. Equity will be attained when the achievements of our undisturbed students match the outcomes of students in the dominant culture. Treating everyone exactly the same does not adequately meet the needs of each individual. In budgeting, what this means is that students or schools with more needs should be provided with additional resources. Bullet Two reads, we acknowledge that equity is both a process and an outcome. We need to provide equitable opportunities as well as ensure equitable achievement. The equity lens says that equity is both a process and an outcome, meaning that equity work is really never done. We can always improve in learning and becoming more equitable. Equity is an outcome, which we provide resources and supports in addition to the general allocation and are effective in meeting the needs of each of our individual students. But what does equity really mean? Bullet One reads, equity requires acknowledging that not all groups of students have been equally successful in our school system. And we've seen that here tonight. The African-American population has not been very successful. So, if every student across our system were equally successful, we wouldn't need to have conversations about equity. But our data tells... But our data tells us that student achievement and growth isn't equitable, and we need to be better. Bullet two reads, equity is based on personal experiences and is therefore perceived and lived differently by different people. Equity doesn't look the same for everyone, because each of us has different life experiences and perspectives. The way we try to meet student needs might look different depending on who you ask. It might look different in different communities across the district. Two people can view the same issue with very different perspectives and come to very different conclusions. And both of them can be pursuing equitable outcomes. And learning from each other and those different perspectives are how we all will become different. Bullet three and four reads, equity might mean intentionally reaching out to underrepresented groups of people to discuss impacts. Equity might mean you're advocating for a group of people who are not represented in the room. Sometimes, equity just means that you remember to think about the perspective of someone who isn't in the room, or it might mean you're advocating on behalf of someone else. This doesn't mean that one person, a group gets to speak their own truth and apply it to another group's truth. But it means that we reach out to determine what really are the needs and beliefs of our underrepresented groups, and then we serve them and be an ally on their behalf. And I'll share quickly with you an example of this. As a former principal of a high school, separate but equal was not okay with me, based on my background and my experiences. I had a Title I school, a large percentage of Spanish-speaking parents and students. I thought I was being equitable by providing all documents in two languages, all PowerPoints in two languages, having translation devices at all meetings. But my evaluations, which were also in two languages, would come back and indicated to me that the parents did not like the meetings. And the reason being, they didn't feel comfortable coming in with non-Spanish-speaking parents to ask questions, and that the translation devices were not acceptable. They wanted a separate meeting. And everything inside of me told me, no, that is not okay. We fought too long and hard, as African-Americans, to do away with the separate but, but equal. But the parents told me they wanted it separate. And when I listened and provided them what they needed, I got raving evaluations.
So, I think Cynthia's story about leaning into equity is, is a really good story, because it speaks to making yourself vulnerable in decision-making. And equity work is hard work. Equality work is relatively easy, because you just look at everybody and say, everybody gets the exact same thing. Equity work requires more of us, and it requires making yourself vulnerable in decision-making, even if you think this is not the best for, for what we need to do. So, and, and I think we need to re, we need to think about, for some people to have equitable discussions, it's harder than for others. And so, we need to create a space where that's done. And so, here are some, some guidelines that we try to follow when we are talking equity in the district. We try to assume best intent, that if somebody brings up an opinion that is different than mine, I try to assume and try to listen for best intent, to understand where they're coming from. We try to actively consider divergent points of view. That's really hard for me, to just be honest, because I'm pretty sure I have a good idea, and I have a really hard time to present that idea and then step back from it to be able to fully consider an idea that may, may be in opposition to that idea. We need, we need to listen to and value the perspective of others, and ultimately, in the pursuit to understand, not necessarily persuade. That's another thing that's hard. A lot of times, we enter into a conversation in a persuasive stance, trying to present all the evidence as to why we try to get somebody to agree with us, instead of, and it's really hard to listen when you're in that stance. I'm married to an attorney, and she is really good at persuading. Sometimes, I don't even know I'm being persuaded until I've already been persuaded. And so, we've learned about the, the key parts of actually listening to be able to understand where we're headed before we try to persuade, one way or the other. So, equity work is messy. It, it should make us a little bit uncomfortable, and I think we saw some of that in the boundary discussions. You can have lots of people get up with the best intent, all with the focus of equity, and come to really different conclusions. And it, and it's messy. And it probably needs to be messy for us to be able to get down into it and to really lean into it. So, I think just creating space for that is important. Oh, and just a, just a side note with equity. One thing that we're trying to do with our district leadership team more and more is, instead of saying, from an equity perspective, I think we should do this or that, actually naming the group that you're talking about. So, when we say, I really think we should add more high school counselors from an equity perspective, well, what do you, why, why from an equity perspective? Are you talking about, maybe about our gay and lesbian, bisexual, transsexual, and queer kids? And so, you think they need more supports from an equity perspective? Are you talking about our EL learners, and so we need to catch them earlier from an equity perspective? So, naming, when you, when you say equity perspective, name the group. Name, name who you're speaking for, or what you think this will address. It helps situate the discussion a little bit. And it makes sure that when we talk equity, we're talking about the same thing. So, this is just a little graphic. We love this graphic in the district, so some of you have probably seen this several twi, several times. So, the notion of equality is that, in this graphic, it means that all kids in this graphic, all bike riders, will get the exact same bike. It works for some better than others, but we would just provide the same across. And again, it's relatively simple. For a budget committee, to be able to look at a budget that provides the same bike is relatively simple. You just need to count the bikes and count the kids. It's a pretty, it's a pretty simple discussion. An equity lens looks at the riders and say, and says, some riders are going to be successful on some bikes and some aren't. So, we need to provide a variety of bikes. And from a budgeting perspective, not all bikes cost the same. So, it gets much messier once you start leaning into that from an equity perspective. And then, Linda? And we are, we're combining two parts of the agenda that, that, about equity and about federal funding, because federal funding is a really good example of the government funding from an equity lens.
Yeah. In fact, this will be one of the easiest examples for you to wrap your head around how equity can apply directly to budgeting. So, did you get this handout? All right. So, we're not going to go through the specifics of this handout, but I want you to have it as a reference point. And I just wanted you to be able to see in a quick summary.
It's in your packet, not in the PowerPoint, in your packet.
Perfect. Okay. I wanted you to be able to see, this just highlights six or seven different federal grants that come in, but as you look at each of these individual grants, the government has issued additional dollars to meet the needs of a specific group or for a specific purpose. So, as you'll note up there, some of those boxes include, we have specific dollars that come in to support students in poverty. Those are Title I dollars. And you will actually hear us refer to Title I schools. Those are schools that have a specific percentage of kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And once they hit a certain percentage, they become a Title I school, and they are eligible to receive additional dollars. That is a perfect example of an equity-based decision. We, all of those schools get a base amount of funding, they get the same that everyone else gets, and then their Title I budgets come on top of that. So, while the role of the budget committee really is primarily focused on general fund expectations, I do think it's important for you to know and understand how the federal funds supplement the work of the general fund in targeting some of these specialized populations. The other reason that this is important is because we get over twenty-one million dollars in grant funds that are targeted for specific purposes in addition to the general fund. All right. The issue with federal funds coming in for targeted populations is, in an effort to ensure that those funds actually get to the students that they're intended to get to, there are very specific rules and regulations that go along with the allocation of those dollars. So, federal funds, in most cases, cannot be applied universally across the system. So, for example, Title I funds must go to students in poverty in Title I schools. So, if a district general fund budget looks as, at equality, as those allocations that meet the foundational requirements of running a school, you have to have a custodian, you have to have a principal, you have to have teachers in classrooms, then equity budgeting would be those resources that come on top to target and meet the individual needs of students. So, federal funds have that same expectation. You must apply base funds first, federal funds come on top. There's a fancy term for that. We call that supplement, not supplant. So, everything you do with federal funds has to supplement and come on top, and this gets sticky. So, there are obviously great reasons for, for having those sorts of restrictions and regulations, but it does get tricky in, in a setting this large. So, let me just give you an example. So, the district receives funds for migrant students. And we can't say, thank you, federal government, for these dollars to help us build better success for our migrant students, and because you gave us those federal dollars, we're now going to take some of that money that we might have spent on migrant students and move it over and spend it on something else. Okay? So, that's the classic no-no. In addition, it gets complicated when you have title schools and non-title schools. So, let me give you an example. The district provides, out of the general fund, a behavior specialist for every high school. And then, two of our high, three of our high schools, so McKay and North and Roberts, as a program high school, receive title funds. If McKay High School elects to use those supplemental Title I funds to buy another behavior specialist, to meet the social-emotional needs of their students, they have every right to do that, because we've already given one to everyone. That's supplemental, no, no rules, no regulations broken or violated. However, the instant that McKay High School elects to use their Title I supplemental funds to buy that behavior specialist, it means that a school like South, that is not Title I, cannot use their general fund dollars to also buy a behavior specialist, because in that moment, it became a general fund expenditure, and McKay's expense was no longer supplemental. So, there are many, many instances in which we push and pull and tug across the district, particularly in a system this large, with schools that are both title and not. So, as we've developed the budget, we have made decisions about equitable resource allocation, and we've made decisions about, we've made decisions about equal resource allocation and equitable resource allocation. And let me give you an example in class size formula. We have to allocate FTE, full-time equivalent, that's staffing, out to schools. And we do that based upon our best guess for the number of kids that are going to walk in the doors. So, we set a base funding of twenty-seven students per classroom in kindergarten through second grade, and twenty-nine students per classroom in grades three through five. That's the base. But out of general fund, we have already put on an equity application, in that we say, out of, at a title school, using general fund dollars, we are going to prioritize FTE staffing at a different ratio. So, in a Title I school, where more students are coming from poverty, those ratios are, in kindergarten through second grade, we try to allocate approximately twenty-five students per FTE. In grades K two, twenty-seven FTE in grades three through five. So, the ratio is adjusted within the general fund. And then, title schools have their title dollars to do that on top. So, we're not going to talk about class size tonight, and the numbers that I just threw out don't correlate directly to class size, but I wanted you to hear the different ways in which dollars and staffing are allocated out to buildings, and that there are adjustments that we make even before federal funds are brought in the door. So, all right, we're going to move to...
So, some specific equity questions related to budgeting. And these are a set of questions that we use, and we continually use, as we make budgeting decisions. And these are questions, quite honestly, I hope that you would hold us accountable to, as, as budget committee members and as community members as well. So, we want to constantly be asking, who are the different groups that are impacted by this decision? We need to think deeply about how our budgeting reflects our values and how different people may be impacted. Have we gone out and repres, and gotten input from underrepresented stakeholders? Looking around in the room today, we need to ask the question, do, do the people in the room today making the decision accurately reflect our kids and their parents? If not, how can we seek out alternative views that may not be represented in the room? And there, there may be groups that are historically underrepresented in a boardroom that we need to seek out. How would this decision reduce disparities? And so, those gaps that we saw that keep us up at night on the student achievement report, we need to reduce those. And not by bringing down one, we need to reduce those by bringing up the bottom. So, how, how do they advance those notions of equity and inclusion? And then, finally, and this fourth one is a really, really difficult one, what are some possible unintended outcomes or unintended consequences for a budgeting decision? And if there are negative things that are impacted, are there steps we can take to mitigate those? And we can think proactively to get in front of those. So, Superintendent Perry is going to tell us a little bit about the governor's proposed budget.
Yeah. I thought it was good to kind of orient ourselves to where we are in the budget process. And the equity work is really harder in a resource-poor system when you're trying to get a base. So, for example, you, you know, have to have classroom teachers at every school. Now, you can have more at some school and less at some school, but at the end of the day, you have to have classroom teachers at every school. So, the governor's budget came out at the beginning of December, and she is proposing eight point nine seven billion for the state school fund. And what the governor and us around the state are calling that is a current service-level budget. And what that will mean is, for some districts, they will be cutting, and some districts will be okay. I don't think there's a lot of districts that would win additional dollars or get additional dollars. Every system is different in the state and has different drivers. So, we're going to call that in Salem Kaiser, just about current service-level budget, which then makes thinking about equity investments, investments in subgroups, if you really are just thinking about what you have in a fairly resource-poor situation, a little harder. There is a piece in the governor's budget around some PERS relief. I don't think that will mean additional savings immediately. It's a very small amount, but it won't mean additional savings for Salem Kaiser or any other district at this, this point. Partial funding of Measure ninety-eight at about a hundred and seventy million, which is about what we have been funded, is about sixty percent. And then, she has put forward a potential for some school improvement funds and some investments. And I tell you this because that's one step in the process, and the second step in the process comes in, in about a week, and that's the co-chair's budget. The co-chairs of the Joint Ways and Means Committee are required to present a balanced budget to the legislature for approval. And I think what we're worried about is that number's going to be lower than the governor's budget, and then that's not a current service-level budget. So, we're going to be in this position for a while to, as we figure out what the funding is. And as we think about, do you go out ahead of that knowledge of funding and do stakeholder groups in your community around things if you don't have resources that you... If you don't have resources that you might give, that makes that piece of the equity lens hard before the proposed budget. So, one of the things I have been working on, though, is to think about, what would we do? We've been asked to dream a little bit, what would we do with some school improvement fund dollars? They're asking us to dream around an additional $600 per ADMW, which, to Salem-Kaiser, would be about 34 million dollars. And if you think about, what could we do with 34 million dollars? Well, there's a whole lot of things we could do, and a whole lot of things that would be equity-related. So, I have begun really thinking about what we're hearing internally in the district around the greatest impacts, and you know we're hearing things around complex student behaviors, class size, counselors, all of that. So, I'm beginning to collect some of that, and it's my job right now to kind of manage and make my best crystal ball guess of where we will land with revenue. And it feels, I just wanted to situate that in the middle of this equity discussion, because it's tricky in a very prescriptive budget process with how do you go out into communities, and how do you do those equity questions prior to knowing how much money you're going to get, and believing you even have enough for current service level and ahead of the budget message? So, know that that's on my mind and something I'm thinking through. Questions on any of that? Jim, did I cover all that okay? Yeah.
We just have a couple more slides, and then, at the end of this, we'll give you a little bit of time to work in pairs or triads to see if you have questions that you could share out then. We thought you might be able to make sense together a little bit before sharing out with the group. Here are some questions that had an equity focus that were brought up in the last budget process, and we thought it was good to just give some examples of the way that people were thinking and the questions that they were asking that influenced the last budget process. So, there was a lot of talk about, and Linda talked about, adjusting our formula for FTE allocations for schools in poverty, or schools that have more students in poverty. We also adopted a math curriculum, and the math curriculum we adopted specifically has more entry points for students who have learning disabilities, and for students who are English-language learners. And the idea was, we want to provide a universal access to math and mathematics for all of our students, regardless of the type of learner that they are. We moved bilingual supports to align with student needs, and what we've seen is, and we talked a little bit about this in the achievement report as well, we're getting fewer and fewer newcomers to our district. Across the state of Oregon, we're getting fewer and fewer newcomers. A lot of our ELs are kids who have been born in Salem and raised in Salem, and as those kids move up through our system, they require different bilingual supports. So, adding additional bilingual supports, and so, all kids can access content, is a key thing that was addressed in the '17-'18 budgeting process. And then, finally, increasing across the system, more social-emotional supports and learning. And that looked like a social-emotional learning curriculum, and counselors, our Office of Behavioral Learning, we've been talking about some of those supports that were given in the board. So, those are just a set of questions that were asked.
And some of these things were conversations that we had in the budget committee, and we also heard quite a bit of public comment about some of these, but there are places where these conversations are difficult to pinpoint, where are they actually present in the budget document itself? So, that's why we have some of these conversations, because as you get flipping through the several hundred pages of the document, there's not a place where we can necessarily go back and pinpoint, on page 36, we can demonstrate this, which is why it's important to have the conversation beforehand, and just know some of the priorities as we're allocating funds.
So, we're wondering about your questions at this point, and the questions that you pose will hopefully frame our next time together, and give us some information about how we can best serve you as you start navigating this process. So, as an equity-focused budget committee member, what questions do you have about the budgeting process at this point? And respecting, again, what Mike said about respecting that, we can't comment on specific budgeting allocation dollars and priorities and that sort of thing, but we can talk about the process. And so, working in groups of two or three, and then, we'll share those out with the overall committee, and we'll record those, and then, use those to kind of frame how we move forward.
But actually, as you're conversing through, if you're coming up with questions, will you jot them on, I think there's post-it notes spread out?
There's little yellow posts.
Yeah, hopefully. And then, that would be helpful for us, even to be able to collect those and make sure that we've got a way to come back and address. So, grab someone to just have a quick conversation with, and we'll come back and listen to those. Yep.
Five minutes. Yeah, five to seven.
Five minutes.
Five.
Is it five or is it seven?
Kathy, would you like to join us?
Five to seven, we'll watch. So, are you guys going to go that way?
I'll stay right there.
I go just one.
Isolated over here.
We are.
So, I can understand what you're trying to do.
It's for improvement, but I'm going to the fifth school improvement fund.
What would we target more?
Over it, right here.
So, this specific?
I would like to see some form of this being added to.
No, no.
To kind of watch.
My interpretation was that you want to.
Kind of like show the word.
I trust that it's being done, but I want to.
The other question, I mean, the other question I have.
The budget, which is probably.
Yeah.
The budget appear.
And clearly, decision.
I think something we do, we said that we didn't need it, but.
Yeah.
And it's just more like, and it's just more of a, just show the word.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, and I realize that it can't be done with everything, to do it, right?
But, you know, to extend that, we can get a little bit behind.
So, for the specific thing, I understand, so when we.
Right.
Yeah, like, it just still looks like what the process is.
Right.
So, how did you decide?
Right.
Yeah, that's, yeah, at least we have, knowing that this is a process undertaken, that we, that we actually have some feedback that it's.
Two more minutes, we've got a lot of opportunities again, so.
It's not really a budget meeting question, but one that you've been.
Yeah.
The other one that I, and this is kind of, this is, is assuring that we are recruiting staff, but like, you know, when I look at, unfortunately, when you look at the State Department, we've got 49% first team, 87%. That's a hard one.
And that's, I mean, that's why.
I want to make sure.
Right, it's 51, 52, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
87.
That to me is a little bit, and hopefully, you know, as they look at their higher rates ratios and their HR ratios, they are actively recruiting individuals and match our student population, because that's.
All right, if you can finish up just the conversation you're having, we'll bring people back.
It has come to our attention that there's a lot of snow falling, so we are going to try to wrap it up as quick as we can, but we have questions for you.
So, maybe we could collect the questions if they're written legibly, and group them into themes, and that could be how we start next time, if that would be okay?
Sure. Put your name on it in case we have questions.
Actually, that's a really good idea. There we go.
That one I can't read this one.
Yeah.
Can't read your names.
Yeah.
As long as you can read the names.
You want to take the bottom two, and I'll do the top two, and you can report them anyway we need to.
I guess so.
She was suicide.
Yeah.
Guess it's another early morning.
That's legible.
No, those are mine.
Yeah.
There's life questions.
I was afraid last.
Yeah.
Just remember that.
Okay, you do that.
I'm not sure we can.
We don't have any more slides.
Alice, we did pretty good.
Maybe if people have questions from this presentation, make it an element to Alice.
Okay, absolutely.
Are that to your feedback on your slides?
Don't have her people.
Better not call you now.
This was, this was education.
They're writing so many questions, it's awesome.
They can, no, that's good, they can keep writing.
Yeah.
Should I talk while they're writing, or should I wait?
It was just here, yeah.
I think he was giving to Adriana, because she didn't have a budget document.
Hello, that's right.
I do have mine at home, though, I just forgot it today.
Yeah, you can see, I've been looking at the cars, they drop off on the parking lot there on the.
Who do we want?
Okay, anything they've got.
Okay.
I'm trying to, I want to go up the channel.
We'll have Alison go in.
I actually took mine to work and then just forgot it.
Jim's still writing one.
I was on my way.
Far end of the bank.
I know.
I just.
It worked hard on me.
The shows.
I know, you keep writing them down, we can still go to them.
We're solving the world now.
We, well, we do, because we do.
Jim, are you still writing? Hey, Craig. Jim's got a couple more.
Yeah, we jump on a call every morning for a half hour.
And then Adriana has a call. We came up with four.
No, I think that's the last.
No, we don't have to physically.
One of them deals with C-Box, but we still want to.
Thank you, well, what do you, it's very hard.
Okay, so I'm going to call us back just real quick to go over next steps. If you have any questions about tonight's presentation, normally, we would have an opportunity to ask questions, but because of the weather, we're going to ask, you email your questions to Alice. Thank you, Alice. And if you would email them to her by Monday, and we'll get those questions answered, and information either out to us or at the next meeting. And just as a reminder, our next budget committee meeting is March 19th, and it starts 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM, so we'll be here earlier, and I think.
I think that was it.
That was it.
Can I make a request?
Yes, please.
I mean, we, as board members, have our equity lens document, but I don't know that the budget committee members have the equity lens with the questions that we created that's part of our board governance to policy. Can we make sure they get that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually meant it for a handout tonight, because that, so.
Okay, well, with that, thank you. Thank you for being here, and please drive safe, and we're adjourned.